Good afternoon. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with Supervisor Parker, Alejo, Phillips, and Adams appearing via video conference and Chair Supervisor Lopez appearing in person. There are no additions and corrections.
Buenas tardes. My name is Maria. I'm here for the services of Intrepid in Español.
Turn to counsel.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the board. The first item on the joint meeting agenda is in action for the Water Resources Agency Board of Supervisors only. The matter was originally consolidated. That's why they called the joint meeting, but they decided to separate it out. The second item, which we'll get to, is a combination of county actions and Water Resources Agency actions. So I can address that when we get there.
So as clarification, we are meeting as the Monterey County Water Resources Agency Board of Supervisors on item one, which is to receive a status report on the Pajaro River Flood Risk Management Project, and that will be a presentation by Fabricio Chambal and Shawna Murray. Mr. Bukie is going to make the intros?
Good afternoon, Chair Lopez and members of the Board of Supervisors. Yes, Shawna Murray and Fabricio Chambal will be making these presentations. Thank you. Let's see. There we go.
Good afternoon, Chair Lopez and members of the board. This is Shawna Murray, Senior Water Resource Engineer at the Water Resource Agency. Today, it is recommended that the Monterey County Water Resource Agency Board of Supervisors receive a status report on the Pajaro River Flood Risk Management Project and approve and authorize the chair to sign the Section 221 MOU agreement and design agreement between the Department of the Army and the joint nonfederal sponsors, the Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, and Monterey County Water Resource Agency, and the associated certification regarding lobbying. Last time we were at the Board of Supervisors was in January of 2020, and we were talking about the JPA formation and the project status. The Board of Supervisors directed staff to finalize the JPA agreement at that time. Since then, we've been to the Board of Directors numerous times, and Santa Cruz County has been, has brought a similar item as this to their Board of Supervisors. The design agreement does require a commitment of the necessary cost share, although the federal work plans are done on an annual basis with annual authorizations for funding. This design agreement has a 35% cost share to be split evenly between Santa Cruz and Monterey Counties. There's also state subvention funds that, once approved, will reimburse both Santa Cruz and Monterey Counties 70% of the nonfederal sponsor cost share. The Water Resource Agency has estimated their cost share to be about 1.27 million for federal fiscal years 20 and 21. Of that, 300,000 has been budgeted in the fiscal year 21 budget. So I'm going to review these items here for today's update. With the governance, the Joint Powers Authority formation was moving forward swiftly. And again, back in January of 2020, we brought some of the key terms to review with the Board of Supervisors. Unfortunately, the COVID pandemic has really stopped that progress. It reduced the ability for candidate members to meet and discuss those final terms. It also introduced new budgetary concerns. Therefore, the formation and the final agreement has been delayed. Staff is working on project financing and cash flow modeling to help identify when would be the best time to move forward with this JPA, very likely this coming, this current fiscal year. And at this time, Monterey County, it's been identified that shortfall is about 900,000 from the Monterey County side for the operating budget and the enhanced O&amp;M. We're not going to talk about that number today, but that is something to keep in mind. It's still very crucial that this new agency forms. It really helps telegraph that importance of this long-term capital and O&amp;M investment. It also is the preference for both state and federal governments to have one signing entity to work with. It falls in line with the Army Corps' public-private partnership. And also, looking at the Pajaro River watershed more holistically, and with both counties, Santa Cruz and Monterey Counties, it helps have more equitable approach to raising that capital and O&amp;M funds and has more consistency throughout the watershed. The SEQA Environmental Review has been progressing on this new project. The scoping period ended in March. There were comments received. Tribal consultation has moved forward. And now staff is working on more of the technical analyses to develop that draft DIR. So that's moving forward. The project design was authorized in December of 2019, which was a huge milestone to have this project move forward. The total project cost for this first design phase is 7.1 million with the cost share of the 65-35 federal nonfederal sponsor. And at this time, the nonfederal sponsor cost share will be split 50-50 between Water Resource Agency and Zone 7. The annual estimates for the current fiscal year, which ends September 30th, is $1.8 million. Next fiscal year, starting October 1st, is 2.915. And the third fiscal year still is to be determined. It's anticipated that this third fiscal year will be a combination of construction funds and continued design efforts on the first prioritized reach. The state's subvention funding is moving forward on a parallel track. This is for the nonfederal cost share to be reimbursed about 70%. At this time, there's negotiations to reach a final funding agreement, which will hopefully be later in July, and we'll bring this item back to the board at that time. The reimbursements under state subventions will be about 6 to 12 months after the payments are received. So looking at cash flow for the agency, the total Water Resource Agency cost share is about 1.27 million, looking at these next two fiscal years, with the state subventions reimbursement of 889,000. That leaves the non-reimbursable commitment 381,000 for the agency. So next steps to move forward with the design agreement is we, this design agreement includes the cost shares and the commitments from the federal government and the nonfederal sponsors. We would like to get the packet together so that the Army Corps can sign the design agreement. So we need a certification regarding lobbying and this MOU agreement to move those two things forward. As I stated, the state's subvention spending agreement will come at a subsequent meeting. So the overall schedule for the project is the SEQA Environmental Review is underway. It is funded by Prop 20 grants. We hope to have the draft DIR later this fiscal year. The project design for this first phase, 7.1 million through fiscal year '22. Project financing is being developed through the Finance and Governance Committee. They're working this summer on a rate capacity analysis for the capital and the enhanced O&amp;M to propose an assessment. The project construction is estimated to be fiscal year '22, with the first phase to be about $30 million. The JPA formation has been identified with an annual operating budget of 1.4 million. And again, it may happen this current fiscal year. And the ongoing operations and maintenance for existing levees continues. The enhanced operations, there is a shortfall of about 900,000 between the two, the governance, operating budget, and the O&amp;M. And that is about 1.9 million is that estimate. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to the board to see if there's any questions. I see Supervisor Parker has her hand up. Supervisor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And you may have talked about this, and this may be in the materials. There were just kind of a lot of moving parts here. So I, my question is that shortfall of $900,000 of the 1.9 million of operations and maintenance money in an ongoing sense, how is that, and that's with the formation of the JPA, how does the JPA envision making up that shortfall?
That is something that we're trying to work through this summer with trying to decide if there is capacity to add that shortfall into the assessment. So adding the capital plus the enhanced O&amp;M to see if there is ability for the community to take that on. And so that's under development now.
Okay, thank you. It just seems a little like walking out on a limb to form a JPA, knowing that we, you know, we don't have money to sustain it or the work that it's there to do. So I just found that a little concerning, but it makes sense that that's part of the deliberation, so.
Seeing no other hands up, we'll go to the, oh, Supervisor Phillips.
Yeah, I'd just say we've been working on this for, someone's been working on it for 55 years, but I mean, with what the commitment we have now with federal government and with the commitment of the state. And then I got to say, our county has been working really well with the County of Santa Cruz, and they've taken the laboring oar on this. And so I think we are really getting somewhere after all these years. And it's, we just don't have a choice to do something that will cost us so little to protect the town of Pajaro and our farmland and on other neighbor on the other side of Watsonville and the other side. We just don't have a choice.
Thank you, Supervisor. Seeing no other hands up, I'm going to go to public comment on this item. Seeing nobody in chambers, I'm going to turn to the Zoom. I'll remind our Zoom participants that at the bottom of your screen, you'll see a raise hand function. If you're participating via phone or landline, star nine will also raise your hand and let us know you wish to be recognized to make a comment. All right, seeing no hands going up, I'll bring it back to this board for action.
Is it on for action? What do you need, Mr. Chair?
I believe it's, it's receive the report and then approve and authorize the chair to sign Section 221 MOU agreement and design agreement between the Department of the Army and the joint nonfederal sponsors, including Santa Cruz County Flood Control, Water Conservation District, and Monterey County Water Resource Agency and Associated Certification Regarding Lobbying.
Okay, that, move approval.
Second.
Thank you. I've got a motion from Phillips and a second from Adams. Now that we have an official action, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Hi, the motion carries. Thank you. So then, at this point, just for the sake of counsel, we are convening as the special, as a special joint meeting of the Monterey County Board of Supervisors and Monterey County Water Resource Agency Board of Supervisors to consider authorizing the County of Monterey to issue a short-term loan up to $1 million to the Monterey County Water Resource Agency. This will be a presentation by Brent Bukie, our general manager.
Chair, if I could just clarify, so the board understands, you see up on the screen the proposed action items. Action item A and B will be by the County Board of Supervisors. Action item C would be by the Water Resources Agency Board of Supervisors.
Good afternoon, Chair Lopez, members of the Board of Supervisors. Fabricio Chambal will be presenting today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Lopez, Honorable Board and members of the public. My name is Fabricio Chambal, Finance Manager with the Water Resources Agency. And today's action is for the agency's Board of Supervisors and the county's Board of Supervisors. And it's a mouthful, so please bear with me. So first is for the county's Board of Supervisors to authorize the county to issue a short-term loan up to $1 million to the agency contingent upon the agency signing an agreement with DWR for reimbursement of the nonfederal cost share of the Pajaro River Flood Risk Management Project Design Phase, and for the county's Board of Supervisors to authorize, direct the other controller's office to amend the CAO's fiscal year '21 adopted budget to increase appropriations in the amount of $1 million, which will be financed by a release of $1 million from the Cannabis Assignment Fund, and for the agency's Board of Supervisors to authorize and direct the other controller's office to amend the agency's fiscal year's '21 adopted budget to increase appropriations and revenues in the amount of $1 million, which will be financed by the transfer from action B above. So prior board action, we brought this item to the agency's Board of Directors. It's June 15, 2020 meeting, and they recommended the request for the loan to move forward. We also brought this request to the county's Budget Committee, which was held on June 24, 2020. And the request was supported by the committee with the condition that the loan was contingent either on the agency signing an agreement with DWR for reimbursement or that the loan was made, if the loan was made prior to the signing of the agreement, that it included a clause that if DWR, that agreement with DWR was not executed within a specified timeframe, the loan would be called back by the county. So staff reviewed the two options and recommended the first option to make the loan contingent upon a signed agreement with DWR. Financial impact to both parties. So on the agency's side, it will provide the current funding shortfall for the design phase of the project while creating a liability in the amount of the loan. The financial impact to the county is that it will reduce the Cannabis Assignment Fund. And I do have a correction here from the number that was submitted in the report. It's actually 23.3 million. This figure was the figure that was presented last week at the Board of Supervisors meeting, in which the county issued a loan of $47,000 to the Barona County Sanitation District. So that's where we pulled the 23.3. So some of the information has already been presented by Ms. Murray's presentation, but this basically describes the need for the loan from the county. So in December 2019, the Army Corps of Engineers signed off on the director's report, which allowed the project to move forward. Again, as presented in the earlier, in the earlier item, the Corps of Engineers, who is a federal-sponsored, the Water Resources Agency, and Santa Cruz Zone 7, who are the nonfederal sponsors, will enter into an agreement that identifies 7.1 million in total project cost for the design phase. The agreement specifies a cost split of 65-35, where 65% of the project will be funded by the federal sponsor, which translates to approximately $4.6 million, and the 35% by the two nonfederal sponsors, which is about $2.5 million. Of the $2.5 million, nonfederal sponsors share. So each entity will be responsible for 50% of the cost, which translates to a little bit over $1.2 million. Additionally, the nonfederal sponsors are working on signing an agreement with DWR for state subventions under Prop 218, which will reimburse 70% of the nonfederal sponsor shared. So this means that of the $1.2 million, approximately $870,000 will be reimbursed back to the nonfederal sponsors. This is less than the amount of the requested loan, and the reason why we added a buffer of approximately $130,000. It's because we weren't sure how increases in CalCap, health insurance, and other costs would impact Fund 112's budget. And so as I, as I will describe in a couple of slides, fund balance in Fund 112 is expected to be extremely low. So this, this slide here, it basically breaks down the cost and was included as part of the pack, the packet that was included with the report. It's just a summary of the costs. So continuing on why the agency is in need of the loan. So there's a possibility that the request for the full $1.2 million is received at once, meaning that the Corps of Engineers will invoice both nonfederal sponsors for their share in the project. Or there is an option that the request comes as two separate requests, one for federal fiscal year '20, which closes on September 30th. And this would be about $480,000. And then, once the new fiscal year '21 opens on October 1st, we may see that second invoice for $760,000. In either case, we suspect that both requests will be within the current county fiscal year, so before June 2021. So currently, the agency generates approximately $515,000 in revenues in Zone 1 and 1A, which fund all the activities in that zone, which means that even if we forego all our O&amp;M and administrative efforts out there, we wouldn't have enough revenues to fund the $1.2 million. What the agency was able to do was allocate $300,000 in the current fiscal year for related project costs. Through the usage of fund balance, and so the issue here is that the use, the usage of this fund balance has depleted our budgeted fund balance to approximately $8,000 at the end of this fiscal year. So after describing the financial issue, there may be a question as to how the agency would then repay the $1 million back to the county. And so, as we mentioned earlier, the nonfederal sponsors are currently working with DWR on an agreement that will reimburse 70% of the total project cost from the nonfederal sponsors. And even though this is, this is great news, there's still a cash flow issue because this means that the federal, nonfederal sponsors have to pay the cost upfront and then have to submit a reimbursement request to DWR, who can take anywhere between six to 12 months after the expenditures have been incurred to reimburse the nonfederal sponsors. As mentioned earlier, one of the recommendations from the Budget Committee was the loan was made contingent upon the nonfederal sponsors signing an agreement with DWR. And we believe this is the best approach. And it's part of the reason why we didn't have a loan agreement included in this request. The thought is that, once we have the executed agreement, we can come back to the board and have the contingency address and a loan agreement ready for signature. On the agreement with DWR, we have a draft agreement going to the agency's Finance Committee for this Friday, and we hope to get that to our Board of Directors sooner or after and bring it back to the Board of Supervisors. The expectation is that this agreement be fully executed before the invoice or invoices are received from the Army Corps of Engineers. And with that, here's today's actions, and we'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chambal. I'm going to turn to board members, see if there's any questions. I see Supervisor Adams has her hand up. Supervisor Adams?
Thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation. I thought it was very interesting, and I appreciate understanding a lot more about that particular area. I'm not so sure that this is a question for you, Mr. Chambal, as much as it might be for Charles McKee. But the question is, with the million-dollar loan that is coming out of the cannabis account, when that funding is achieved and returned, will that funding go back to the assignment account?
So that would be up to direction of the board. Obviously, it would come back into the County General Fund as a, you know, obviously, they're all general funds, but that's a direction piece from the board that we would, we would look, look to the board for that.
And when would we have the opportunity to do that?
You can indicate that now as part of the, part of the approval, or you could indicate it at the time that the money is, is kind of paid back.
And can you tell me what the process generally is? When funds are borrowed from, you know, one account to another account, does it generally go back to, from where it has come?
Well, we don't, it's not a, it's not a normal process. We don't do it very often, so I wouldn't say how we generally do it. So, you know, that, it's, you know, it's a general fund item. And so that cannabis is general fund. It's just an assignment. So it would go back into the general fund. It's just whether you have that assignment designation.
And so is that, did you say I could add that to today's action?
I think so. Yeah, I think so. And, and our counsel is shaking his head. Yes.
Okay, good. I'd like to make that happen then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from board members? Seeing no hands going up, I'm going to turn to the public and see if we have any public comment on this item. Seeing nobody in chambers, I'm going to go ahead and turn to the Zoom and see if we have anybody who would like to speak on this item via Zoom. Seeing no hands going up, I will bring it back to this board for action, and I will ask counsel to clarify which board is taking action on one and two or AMB.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the board. The Monterey County Board of Supervisors will take action on sub-items A and B. And if somebody wishes to make a motion, they would need to add Supervisor Adams' request that upon repayment of the loan, that the money be replaced back in the cannabis assignment. And then the Water Resources Agency Board of Supervisors will act on item C.
Okay.
I'll move, I'll move approval of AMB and, and with the augmentation or the addition that Supervisor Adams gets her cannabis money back when, when we get reimbursed, so.
Well, I'll second that motion. Thank you.
All right. So we have AMB are being moved by Supervisor Phillips and seconded by Supervisor Adams. Can we get a roll call vote as the Board of Supervisors on that, please?
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Hi, thank you. The motion carries. So now, as the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resource Agency will take up item C. And we did already open this for public comment, but just to be clear, although one more time, is there any public comment on item C on this item that we are about to consider? Seeing nobody in chambers, I'll look to the Zoom. I see no hands up via the Zoom. So I'm going to bring it back to this board for action.
Move approval.
And I will second that.
I've got a motion from Parker and a second from Adams. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Hi, the motion carries. Thank you. So at this point, we're going to adjourn the special joint meeting of the Monterey County Board of Supervisors and Monterey County Water Resource Agency Board of Supervisors. And we will reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors on our public agenda items. And let the record reflect that all members are present either via Zoom or in person. And we will start with item 21, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance to Chapter 21.17. And that will be a presentation by Jamie Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Craig Spencer with Monterey County Resource Management Agency. I'll be presenting on behalf of Jamie today. So, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. Craig Spencer again, today presenting the mixed-use ordinance for your consideration. The mixed-use ordinance implements Policy LU 2.33 of the 2010 General Plan by providing zoning regulations at the zoning level that implement the mixed-use designation that's established in the General Plan that was not part of the zoning regulations previously. To do so, it amends Title 21 of the Monterey County Code, the inland zoning regulations, to add definitions, establish a mixed-use zoning district, and to amend the cannabis regulations to add mixed-use as a district that permits cannabis dispensaries as a commercial use within the mixed-use district. Structurally, the ordinance has been drafted to create a district that allows a mix of residential and nonresidential uses, primarily commercial and institutional uses in addition to residential. It has been set up so that there are uses allowed, which are uses that are required to be allowed in certain zoning districts under state housing law, including homeless shelters and transitional and supportive housing. Most development within the mixed-use district would require a use- would require a use permit subject to a general development plan. And that use permit in general development plan would indicate the mix of uses proposed within each mixed-use district. Those developments could include vertical mixed-use, which would typically be residential above commercial with commercial pedestrian oriented on the ground floor. Or residential behind commercial with commercial at the front of the properties, again, with pedestrian orientation. The idea of the mixed-use zoning regulations in front of you is to promote housing in, in close proximity to jobs and to promote pedestrian orientation with connections between commercial centers, residential, and open space areas, as well as to promote alternative modes of transportation and connections to bus and other mass transportation options. For reference, the, there are no changes proposed to any zoning or land use designations today. The item before you implements the, the text of the General Plan to establish the mixed-use ordinance at the zoning level. However, there are some maps in the General Plan that identify certain areas as being designated for mixed-use. There are two scenarios that are on the screen. One would be community plan areas like Fort Ord or Casterville. Within Fort Ord and Casterville, there are areas that are designated for mixed-use development. Those developments would refer specifically to the adopted community plan for the development area and not to these general zoning regulations. There is one site in Toro that is near Highway 68 and Reservation Road that is designated for mixed-use development. The zoning has not changed to reflect that yet. What's before you is the text that implements the 2010 General Plan direction to establish the mixed-use zoning district. We did receive a couple of comments on this item. The, the comments reflect the desire not to see mixed-use regulations, particularly in the Toro area. Again, the Toro area maps were adopted as part of the 2010 General Plan and are not proposed to change. We also received comments regarding the environmental documentation. And part of the action today does include consideration of an addendum to the 2010 General Plan as there's no specific development and this item simply implements the 2010 General Plan direction at the zoning level. I'd also like to point out that this item was brought before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the ordinance to the Board of Supervisors by unanimous vote and also requested that the Board of Supervisors consider expanding the mixed-use designation to other areas within the county moving forward. So with that, staff is recommending that the Board of Supervisors consider the addendum to the 2010 General Plan EIR and adopt the mixed-use zoning regulations in front of you, adding the mixed-use regulations to the zoning code. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Supervisor Parker, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, yes. So I have, I have concerns and I'm going to state them as statements, but staff may want to respond, so that's why I'm going to say them now. So I have concerns about adopting this ordinance today as much as I appreciate mixed-use and have been pushing for these general plan ordinances. So I'm, I, I feel strange saying this, but knowing how strongly I feel about moving these things forward, I, I hope you'll appreciate the fact that these concerns are, are very deep-seated in me. So basically, in 2010, we started a process when we adopted the General Plan and we designated certain parcels as mixed-use. It was a new designation, so it, it required that we revise the code. So staff are now bringing forward those code revisions as an ordinance to complete the process that we began in 2010. So this is kind of a Phase Two of, of that process. In, in my opinion, we can't proceed with Phase Two right now because since 2010, the county has made alternative commitments regarding properties in Fort Ord that were designated mixed-use. The Whispering Oaks, which many of us will remember, was the subject of a rather contentious referendum and the East Garrison 2 site. At East Garrison 2, the county submitted a long-range property management plan to the Department of Finance at the state, stating that East Garrison 2 shouldn't be sold or developed because the county needed to keep it as mitigation and conservation land. And Department of Finance accepted that. If the county wants to develop it, develop that East Garrison 2, we would need to go back to the state, undo that commitment that we made in the long-range property management plan. I believe that the county may also have made some representations to the city of Marina regarding future uses of Whispering Oaks. I don't, I don't remember that as clearly, but we should definitely look into that. The, the farmland off of Reservation Road, to me, that does, that is contrary to our stated goals of preserving ag land, trying to focus on infill development, which is the whole way the County General Plan was organized, and of course, smart growth. So before we can proceed with Phase Two of this mixed-use designation, we need to fix the planning documents for Fort Ord. And, you know, staff have said, and may say again, that we're merely adding language to the code, not making any decisions about land use. But we're enabling a developer to move ahead with entitlements on those sites, which would create legal problems if we want to say no. And when I contacted staff about this, they said, "Well, on Fort Ord, they would have to come up with a specific plan." But why would we put a developer through those hoops if they'll just run up against the Department of Finance? So I think we should clean those things up and update the Fort Ord planning documents before we adopt an ordinance. And I think if we adopt this ordinance today, we're solidifying the decision, the 2010 decision to designate those sites. We're reaffirming that those sites are for mixed-use development as of today. So a developer can argue that we've committed to allowing such uses, even though developing them would violate legal commitments that we've made in the meantime. So to me, it just is a mess in the making and it's one that we can prevent. If we just go back and look at those, the Fort Ord documents and, and, and use the opportunity to take advice of the Planning Commission to look at whether there are other sites where we might designate mixed-use. And I just want to say that I'm pretty sure that the planners working on this ordinance were unaware of the, the Fort Ord-related actions that have been taken in the last 10 years. So it's no criticism of the work that's been done. I think the ordinance makes a lot of sense, but I have grave concerns about adopting it before we update the general plan, you know, designations, especially on Fort Ord. Thanks.
All right. Any other, Supervisor Adams?
Thank you. I'm so, I just am curious what it would take for us to do that, to go back and fix this, especially if it would deter us from being put in a position where someone could sue us over this. And, and would it slow anything else down? Are we under any kind of a time constraint here?
If I may, Mr. Chair, this is Carl Home. I'll interject here. What it would entail would be basically a general plan amendment to go back and amend the, the, the Fort Ord land use element. And at least specifically to Fort Ord. And as Supervisor Parker noted, the, when the successor agency was coming up with the plan as far as how the lands were going to be disposed, the, the plan that was sent to the Department of Finance for the East Garrison 2 area specifically, which is designated for mixed-use, the county indicated that it would not be used for development. In other words, we weren't going to dispose of it and have it purchased for, for development. Because that was the, that was kind of the, the direction that the, the state wanted former redevelopment agencies to, to follow. As far as Whispering Oaks, with the, the county's action for that to go to the city of Marina, it, that, it, that will be under the, the city's general plan once that, that action is, is completed and would not be subject to the county's general plan at that point. So those, those areas kind of each have their own context. But this, again, what the, the zoning amendment would do now is really functionally, the, the only area that would, would benefit would be the, the Toro site at Reservation at Portola, which was designated in the general plan as, as mixed-use. But again, if, if the board doesn't want that to occur, it would be a general plan amendment to change that, that land use designation. So it, that would be an involved matter to put onto the, the priority list to amend the different portions of the general plan relative to that. Meanwhile, even without this text, as we saw with Whispering Oaks, a project can still come forward and say, you know, here, the, this is what the property is designated in the land use plan. Here's my proposal and here's the, basically, the standards that I'm, I'm going to follow. Whereas if we adopt these, now we at least have the standards in place. So I don't know that, that not moving forward today would prevent a developer from coming forward. They would just have to come forward with, with the, the standards if they wanted to develop their property. We wouldn't be able to say, "You can't develop your property" until we, we put the, the standards in place, which is what we did with Whispering Oaks. So I don't know if that answers your, your, your question totally or if there's anything else.
I think you have prompted more questions than a little more.
I thought I might have.
Yeah, exactly. So if, if we were just to look at the Fort Ord component, what would the outcome be for that? If that's the main area of, you know, of concern?
So we, and within the general plan, there's the Fort Ord master plan. That was identified in the general plan that it would be a community area. And so, it could be done one of two ways, either as a, as an amendment to the general plan, to the master plan, the Fort Ord master plan, basically amending the, the land use map if there was a concern relative to the land use designations, which to be consistent with the, the successor agency's plan, which is, you know, separate from the county, but is still some, the plan that we are following for the, for the use of those, those lands out there. The other way to do it would be to adopt a community plan, which would be a much more involved process because it would be an all-encompassing plan for that, that whole area.
But we would sort of stay out of hot water if we did just, at least just did the Fort Ord part, right? Or potential hot water?
Well, I'll defer to, to council if they feel that there's, there's water boiling here. I don't know, Wendy, do you want to?
Ms. Strimling?
Good afternoon. You know, whether or not there's legal liability would really kind of depend on the facts. I think the issue that Supervisor Parker was alluding to is possibly that if you have a general plan designation and then we're sort of implementing it with these regulations, have you raised expectations? And so then, if you later come along and say, "You know what, we're not going to allow development in this spot. We're going to make it, you know, conservation or open space." Does the developer say, "Well, my reasonable investment-backed expectations" were that this is the place where you had, you know, suggested a concentration of development? And so, they might allege a takings. And as you know, a regulatory takings becomes an ad hoc factual inquiry into all the facts and circumstances. And one of them is you look at, what are the reasonable investment-backed expectations of the private property owner? I think with East Garrison 2, that isn't in private property right now. But the, I think the Reservation Road, Highway 68 property is in private ownership. So, so that, so that, that's where I think that the, you know, whether or not it would be a legal vulnerability, you know, is, is obviously something that we would have to, to see. With regard to the Fort Ord properties, it's sort of different issues, not really a takings issue. It's a question of, would this ordinance be inconsistent with, you know, a plan adopted by the successor agency and blessed by the Department of Finance? And I mean, there, I think I would say that the ordinance is only establishing the regulations for the mixed-use district. It isn't actually saying which properties are subject to that designation. That's already been done per the 2010 General Plan. And so, you know, just because you're adopting this, this ordinance doesn't cement in place that, that has to remain designated as mixed-use. The, the board, in its discretion, can consider a general plan amendment to change the land use designations and, you know, decide to put mixed-use in other parts of the county and, and not where it is today. But that takes a general plan amendment. So, you know, I don't know if that really helped, but it's a kind of, it depends.
Council juror?
Thank you very much. I, I would like to just add on a little bit to what Ms. Strimling has said. A property owner has, generally speaking, no vested right in a particular zoning. And the legislative body is free to change that zoning. Property owner gains a vested right in a permit or other development approval once they've spent sufficient or significant amounts of money towards the implementation of that permit or that approval. So even if a permit is issued to do something, if the property owner is not spending any money on it, that permit may be revoked under the appropriate circumstances. All of this is to say that, while Ms. Strimling correctly points out that actions may create expectations, that doesn't create a vested right in a property owner in that underlying zoning.
Supervisor Parker?
Thank you. Just, you know, as, as we're slicing and dicing here, I would just say that anybody who's been around for a while may remember Rancho San Juan and all of the malarkey that went on there. And I don't know what the exact underlying issues were, but there was all this stuff of, "Well, the county has to move forward and process the title, the entitlements." And even though it's, the development is not exactly appropriate for there, blah, blah, blah. It became this huge contentious issue because there was a lack of clarity. So I just am trying to avoid us knowingly stepping into a situation where we say, it's all very well to say, "Well, we designated these, the land use in the general plan." Yes, we did. And we have changed that since then. So now for us to reaffirm what's in the 2010 General Plan creates a contradiction that to me is just, it's fodder for confusion, for lawsuits. And I just don't see the, why we would do that when we have a fairly simple way to just clarify what the, you know, what the planning documents for Fort Ord actually should say at this point. The, the question of the, well, The, the question of the, well, I'll just leave it, leave it there.
Thank you. So I see no other hands up from board members, so I'm going to quickly turn to the public and see if we have any public comment. I see nobody in chambers. Anybody via the Zoom? See no hands up via the Zoom, so I'm going to bring it back to the board, close public comment. Let's see if our C O has any comments for us. He keeps touching the button and backing off of it, so if not, it's okay.
Yeah, two things. One, first, you know, just wanted to hear, you know, uh, from staff about, uh, you know, if somebody were to come forward with a, a proposal of mixed use development in one of these areas, what discretionary actions would be left for the, for the, either the planning commissioner or the board of supervisors to take? And then the other is, uh, you know, can we come back at a, at a future meeting to try to flesh out some of these issues that are being raised by the two supervisors to see if we can address them?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, or Mr. C O, Craig Spencer again. I, uh, so right now, a, a, without the mixed use text in the zoning code, an application would need to come forward with a zoning amendment and a, a specific plan under the general plan policies in place currently. So there would be a legislative action and a discretionary permit entitlement that accompanied the underlying development. The, the, with the mixed use regulations and text in the zoning code, the application would come forward with just a zoning map change to apply the mixed use zone and would be subject to the regulations in the mixed use zoning district. So, so the difference is minimal in some ways because both involve some legislative action to rezone a property and the, and both involve discretionary underlying permits. It's just a matter of whether or not there's specific regulations that would need to be followed in the zoning text as part of a development, let's say in Toro area. That property would need to provide for a planned development sort of concept or specific plan and would be subject to the general plan criteria, but wouldn't have an underlying zoning district to, to apply a mixed use designation to.
Supervisor Alejo?
I want to see where, where the board is. So I'd make a motion to approve. This item was unanimously approved by the planning commission. So I think, let's, uh, see if we got a second and then we can take a vote and see whether we can move forward today.
Second.
We have a, a motion in a second. And the microphones are being turned away, so I, I'm good there. Any additional conversation? I will say from my end, I'm supportive today, understanding that there's projects that, that need this in a way to move forward in a more streamlined way and allow us to set up expectations as a county on mixed use. And so that's the reason I'm supportive. Any additional conversation?
Yes, my last comment, which is, yeah, I feel like if it just takes a small thing to do to remove the specter of a potential lawsuit, when we, you know, find ourselves just day by day getting sued over one thing or another, I don't know why we wouldn't do it. And it doesn't sound like rocket science to just correct it. So then, you know, things will be clearer.
But just because you're.
Supervisor Parker?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. I had something to say and then I just forgot it, so I lowered my hand.
Then I'll call for the vote. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
No.
Supervisor Adams?
No.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye. The motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, I was just going to say, just because somebody assumes or, or believes there's going to be lawsuits, doesn't mean there's going to be one. And everything we do, there's always a potential somebody's going to sue, but just because you say there's going to be lawsuits, doesn't mean there's actually going to be one on the action taken. Thank you.
So I'm going to head into our last item, which is a present take. Wendy?
Did, I'm sorry, Mr. Did you take, did you ask for a public comment? Did I miss that?
I did.
Okay.
We did take public comment. Thank you.
There was no, okay.
There was no public comment. Okay. So moving forward, I have a presentation from Nicholas Lido as well as Diana Jimenez on our Department of Social Services Aging and Adult Services Branch, Implementation of the Federally Mandated Electronic Visit Verification for IHSS.
Thank you, Chair Lopez. My name is Emily Nickel and I'm the Program Manager for In-Home Supportive Services and the Public Authority for Monterey County. And I have with me Nick Lido, Diana Jimenez, our Deputy Director is unable to be with us today. And so I just want to verify that you can see my screen. Yes.
We can. Thank you.
Okay. So I just, uh, I would like to share that this was a presentation, a portion of which I shared at the Health, Housing and Homelessness Committee back in mid-April, and then I was asked to present it to the larger board. But just to give a little background about in-home supportive services, we are a Medi-Cal funded program. We support seniors and people with disabilities to live in their home. And the Medi-Cal dollars pay for the caregivers to come into their home, or in many cases, it's actually a relative or someone who's living in the home and we're able to pay them and support them to stay in the home rather than going into skilled nursing facilities or some other scenario. And this just gives you a little overview of some of the services that are covered by in-home supportive services. It's broken down into personal care services, which are things like bathing and grooming and that sort of thing, as well as domestic services, which are more like cleaning the home and meal preparation. And just to give you an idea of the size of our program, right now we have near about fifty-two hundred recipients of this program and forty-seven hundred providers. So it's a pretty big program. We're talking 10,000 people in the county involved in one way or another in the in-home supportive services program. So historically, the providers and the recipients completed paper time sheets. And those were sent to a facility to be processed. There was a federal mandate a couple of years ago now that is requiring all states to do electronic visit verification. And we did get a waiver, California got a waiver of one, one year to implement, but it must be implemented as of January 1st, 2021. And there are penalties attached if we don't implement. It's starting at 1% of the IHSS budget for next year if we don't implement it. So it's not a huge change. California's interpretation of how to implement electronic visit verification is pretty simple. The provider only has to put the start time, when did they start providing services? When did they end providing services? And where was the location? Either home, community, or both. They don't have to say exactly where they were, where they have been. They, there's no GPS location, which is something that some other states had done to do electronic visit verification. So again, it's pretty, pretty simple. And basically the options for providers and recipients will be, they will no longer use paper time sheets. They will either use electronic time sheets online or using a smartphone or telephone time sheets. And there's already been in existence a telephone time sheet system for the recipients because we have many who are unable to use their hands to sign something. Or there's many reasons why they might have used the telephone time sheets, including having blindness or visual impairment. So, and there's a lot of benefits to doing the electronic time sheets. And they, these are our selling points as we're trying to get people onto one of these two systems. You get a little window that pops up that says if you did your math wrong or if you build for too many hours, which prevents them, the providers, from getting overtime violations, which could eventually lead to them being suspended or even terminated as providers. And they don't have to pay for postage. And right now in the time of COVID, they don't even have, they don't have to go to the post office. They don't have to buy postage. They just can do this electronically on their smartphones. It's very easy. And it also eliminates us having to reprint time sheets because that happens quite a bit. The machine that reads the time sheets eats the time sheets and can't read them properly, that sort of thing. So there's lots of great benefits to that. So Monterey County was in the third wave of this, of the counties in the state to implement this. So anybody who's using electronic or telephone time sheets right now is having to put the start time and the end time and the location as of May 1st. But by the end of this year, we have to get everyone who's not signed up, signed up. And so I'm going to turn it over to Nick Lido to talk about our efforts to get people signed up.
Thank you, Emily. So basically the first thing we looked at was low hanging fruit, right? How can we get the biggest bang for our buck and enroll the most providers and recipients with the least amount of effort? So the first angle that we attacked was whenever anyone walks into our customer lobby, the vast majority of our payroll visits are for assistance with paper time sheets, or at least they were. So right away, right off the bat, starting in August of 2019, anytime anybody came in, any provider came in with a question about a paper time sheet, we gave them education materials on E V V, electronic visit verification, and even offered to sign them up right then and there. If they didn't want to sign up or they didn't have time, we would give them an appointment for a later time where we had group sessions. So that was kind of one way to kind of chop it at the end to make sure we get everybody new. Additionally, prior to COVID, we held new provider orientations every two weeks. And in these new provider orientations, we averaged between seventy-five and eighty participants. So they all received the E V V materials and all received information on how to call to get one-on-one assistance in our computer labs to help get signed up for E V V. And then finally, we established a work group to kind of talk through strategies and, and just kind of how we wanted to attack getting everybody converted. And we had staff from all levels. We had everybody from office assistants, payroll staff, social workers, supervisors, analysts, programmers. Next slide, please. So we tried to anticipate what sort of opposition we would run into or sort of the challenges we would, we would have in getting folks to sign up. And one of the big things was internet connection. Folks who live, you know, out and out in the sticks in Big Sur or South County where the internet access is tough, we wanted to try and create a, like, we know it's not ideal, but this is, you know, the best thing we can do for you here in our office. And so in each of our district offices, King City, Seaside and Salinas, we purchased two iPads for each office. So anyone, any provider can come in, let us, let us see their ID to verify they're an active provider and we'll hand them an iPad so they can complete their electronic visit verification. So sort of a last ditch effort, but if your reasoning for not signing up is internet access, we tried to solve that problem with that. And this started before COVID, but definitely after COVID, we also have designated staff that are actually cold calling folks. So using data from the state, we sort of whittled down our list to see who hasn't signed up yet, who hasn't been contacted. And we've divided those lists, lists up among staff to cold call and try to get people to sign up for electronic visit verification that way. Not the most successful approach, but as you'll see, we're kind of getting down to the end here with our, with what we have left to sign up. Next slide, please. Okay, so up until COVID, payroll staff, which is the staff that I oversee, we actually held seventy-five training sessions with providers since spring of 2019. So we would advertise, we would call, we would send flyers. Any way to get the word out that we're having these sort of general classroom sessions to have folks sign up for electronic visit verification, we tried to get the word out. And, uh, yeah, as a result, we had seventy-five classes. Since COVID, obviously, we've had to stop that, revert back to the cold calls. But this was a, a fairly successful channel for getting folks to sign up when it was active and going. Next slide, please. So with the COVID-19, we kind of had a, a timing. As, as Emily mentioned earlier, we had a timing thing where our wave began in May. So in May, basically what that meant was the state was going to provide us with additional resources to get folks to sign up. So they sent out a mailer in April to recipients and providers. And it was actually very useful from, we were able to determine that from those flyers sent out by the state, that actually boosted our enrollment 10%. So at the time, we were at 66% enrolled and we bumped up to 76%. And we can attribute that just to those mailers from the state to folks. They would call us. There's a number to call our office. They'd call our office and then we'd get them set up with an appointment or get them set up right then and there that way. Again, all in person outreach has been suspended. We're relying heavily on our call lists, but they are getting shorter and shorter luckily. Next slide, please. So again, to reiterate, we have 10,000 people that we need to have signed up and ready to go on this by the end of the year. And luckily, since we started in spring of last year, we're up to 86%, almost 87%. So, you know, we're, we're kind of, we're kind of down to the end where we're getting a lot of resistance from folks who just don't want to sign up or there's additional resistance or we're having trouble getting hold of these last, last bunch of folks, this last 14%. So it's getting increasingly difficult and our, but our lists are getting shorter. So we're going up slowly. I'm going to, another challenge is that while we have folks who speak a variety of different languages, the E V V material is only available in English, Spanish, Armenian and Chinese at the time, as of right now, excuse me. So for providers, this is sort of like a you don't have a choice thing. Enrolling in electronic visit verification is going to be a condition of employment for providers. So when we have those difficult conversations, sometimes that's the last resort sort of hammer drop that we need to leave for the providers to consider before they, you know, decide whether they do or do not want to sign up for E V V is that this is a condition of employment. It cannot work for IHSS if you don't want to sign up for electronic visit verification. And for recipients, there are very few exceptions, if any. I might, we might as well say there are. I mean, there are very few exceptions. It's very niche what those exceptions are. And then again, the isolation for geographic language age, that's really causing a problem. What we're hearing through the channels from these cold calls is that folks are just reluctant to change. You know, it involves technology and involves picking up your phone, whereas opposed to you just calling a number and talk to us or show up and talk to us face to face. Now you do it all with the computer. So folks who struggle with that as it is are, are finding it difficult to convert to this. And how you can help, just please help advocate for us. If you have any providers in your districts and you have regular conversations with them, recognizing that this is a federal mandate that must be implemented and kind of passing that information on to your constituents would be appreciated. And please refer to our payroll department, seven five five four four six six. We'll get them signed up soon as they call.
Can you repeat that number one more time, Nick?
I sure can. Eight three one, seven five five, four four, six six. And listen to the prompts for the payroll department. Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right. Let me turn to the board to see if there's any questions from board members. See no hands going up, so we'll turn to the public. See if we have any public comment on this presentation. Seeing no hands going up, I'll turn to the room and see our member of the public not coming forward. I'm going to come back to the board and I see Supervisor Phillips has his hand up.
Yeah, I, I just think it has to be done and it, it, they've taken and done a lot of work to bring this about to just make sense. So at the appropriate time, I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
So thank you. And all, at this point, all we're asking for is your support in case constituents come to you with any complaints about having to, to stop using paper time sheets. Just know that they'll need to do it. And telephones are an option for those who don't have smartphones, don't have internet access. And telephones are an option for those who don't have smartphones, don't have internet access. They only need to be able to access a phone twice a month to either approve or to submit time sheets.
Thank you, Emily, and thank you, Nick. I know this is the second time I've seen this presentation and it's extremely informative and important that our public understand why this is happening, that it's not some direction coming here from the Board of Supervisors saying you must. But now that it's done at the federal level, we're here to support them in, in getting to the answers. And Nick and Emily are doing a great job of helping us meet this mandate. And so as folks come forward to our offices, we just want to be sure everybody was aware of where this was coming from and where we all need to get to together. And so in the time of COVID, obviously, there's some new challenges that are presented without the ability to help somebody in person program their phone and, and kind of show them those steps. But even with that, there are answers and there are solutions and there are resources available. Supervisor Parker?
Mr. Chair, just want to express my appreciation to the staff and everyone working on this. These kinds of changes are really difficult for people, myself included. So it's, it does take a lot of repeated efforts and reassurance and working with people to help them make these kinds of changes to a different, you know, different technology, different way of doing things. So I, I know it, it can be just so hard for everyone involved. So just want to express my appreciation for, you know, all of the work and patience that it takes to get the, get the job done.
Thank you.
We have incredibly patient staff who take calls every pay period from people who struggle and we're happy to do it.
All right. Thank you, Nick and Emily. And with that, we will go ahead and close this presentation. We appreciate that. I'm going to turn to County Council and see if there's anything to report out of closed session from today.
There was no reportable action, Chair.
So seeing none, we will be, we stand adjourned and we will reconvene next week. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye-bye.